All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting, September 10th, 2024. Both adequate and electronic notice this meeting specifying the time, place, and manner which such notice was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4-6, specifically on January 9th, 2024. Proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the Township at Bridgewater and posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 and no new testimony will be taken after 10:00 PM. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, Roger. If we could have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yes, here.
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 At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to speak on any land use issue that is not on our agenda this evening. All right, and I want to recognize Mayor Mensch of Bridgewater Township, also a resident.
I, uh, thank you, Chairman. It's really weird being on this side of the day, it's in this room, but I was here. If you noticed, we put flags out this afternoon with some of the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts in advance of tomorrow's 9/11 ceremony, so hopefully you see the flags as you drive in and out. It was a good day with the kids to do that, and I was getting ready to go home for the day, and I saw folks coming in, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say to all of you here, thank you for all the hard work that you do. It's very much appreciated, and I know the residents appreciate it, developers and applicants probably appreciate it, but in all seriousness, I'll thank you all for all your service, and I really appreciate the diligence that you put into hearing applications and the time you take to prep for them. This board has a great reputation, and it's because of all the hard work that all of you do. So, thank you, and hopefully, I don't know, I can't tell if it'll be a long or a short meeting. I'm going to leave now, but hopefully you have a good meeting tonight, and again, thank you all for your service, and Chairman, thank you for running a great board and great meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. It's very nice of you to say, and good seeing you, and have a nice weekend.
Yeah, good. All right, have a good night, everybody.
All right, next up, we have, um, board minutes, we have none, resolutions, we have none. Rich, could you just take us through some of our future cases?
So, pending for the board, for the October 22nd meeting, will be 821 Bridgewater LLC in the Jewish Community Center. That is carried again to 1022 without any further notices. Then on November 12th, we have Bridgewater Realty 2 LLC, AKA Starbucks. That is tentatively scheduled for 1112. There'll be a new notice for that application. Also, on November 12th, there's CX Towers, carried to there, also with new notice if they proceed on that night. And then on December 10th, we have Belly Holdings LLC, to be continued on, again, December 10th with new notice. And then on this, also December 10th, we have 1200 Route 22 Land Investors and 1200 Route 22 LLC Holding, again, carried with, but there'll be new notice.
All right, thank you. So tonight, we have Somerset Properties, 757 Route 202-206. Mr. Plocke, good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you, Brian Plocke, from the firm of Hutch Manowitz and Plocke, here on behalf of the applicant Somerset Properties Associates LLC. My client is here in connection with an existing two-story office building located on approximately 5.62 acres in the GCM, the General Commercial and Manufacturing Zone. My client is the proposed tenant for the vacant, currently vacant, second floor of the building, and seeks to operate an adult daycare facility. Now, although nursing homes, assisted living facilities, medical, dental uses are permitted in the GCM zone, adult daycare is not in the list of permitted uses, even though it is very similar, as you'll hear from my client this evening. Accordingly, my client requires and seeks a use variance to permit the adult daycare use on this particular property. Additionally, to the use variance, my client seeks preliminary and final site plan approval to add a portico share, a covered area where the proposed customers of the adult daycare can be picked up and dropped off. That portico share also comes with some altered curbing for pickup and drop off, and except for the addition of the portico share and some restriping of the parking lot in the rear and rearranging of some of the handicap spaces, there are no site, other site improvements proposed as part of this application. There is one associated bulk variance that is required. That is for the front yard setback. 100 feet is required. Because of the portico share, that is going to be proposed to be 62 feet from the front property line, and therefore requires a bulk variance. And just so that the record is complete, there are four other existing non-conformities that this application does not propose to change. That is the setback for one side yard, parking side yard setback, parking front yard setback, and the setback for the existing freestanding sign. We could certainly get into those measurements if the board asks, but those four are existing non-conformities, and this application does not propose to change any of them. That being said, I do have my witnesses ready, and I'm ready to call my first witness unless the board has something.
One second. Could we just check the notice and jurisdiction there, Rich? Mr. Chairman, I did review the notice, and it's in proper form, was served by certified mail on August 29th, published on August 30th, so we do have jurisdiction.
Want to just swear all your witnesses in right now?
All of them?
Yeah.
Sure.
Swear on our folks, and we'll keep it moving.
All right.
All right.
So why don't we bring them all up and do you all at the same time? That's it, that's, they're all going to testify?
They are all going to testify. Just for the record, we do have a representative from the property owner if and when we need any information, and only he can provide, so he's one of them. Thank you.
All right, well, if you would all raise your right hands, please, as you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right, why don't we start from my left, and just your name and spell your last name for the record, please?
My name is Jonathan Kuybida Architect, and the last name is K-U-Y-B-I-D-A.
Maybe we can just pass that microphone.
My name is Rihanna Kirchhoff. I am the traffic engineer for the applicant. That is K-I-R-C-H-O-F.
Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Brien, O-B-R-I-E-N, professional planner.
Jacob Zirinsky, last name Z-I-R-I-N-S-K-Y. I'm the owner's rep.
I'm sorry, where are you?
The owner's rep.
Hello, my name is Henry Hirsch. I work with the owner of the property on site.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Yes, H-I-R-S-C-H.
My name, my name is Adonis Crispo, A-D-O-N-I-S-C-R-I-S-P-O, professional engineer with the Reynolds Group.
My name's Jeff Reynolds, R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S, and I'm the project manager from the Reynolds Group.
My name is Mark Irwin, I-R-W-I-N, and I'm the chief operating officer for the Somerset Company.
William Burr Township and Zoning Board Engineer.
Catherine Sarma, Township Planner and Board Planner.
All right, everyone, thank you very much. We are hopeful of getting through your application tonight.
Yes, and we are hopeful that we do not actually need to call everybody who just identified themselves. We'll see. That being said, the applicant calls our architect, John Kuybida.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just remind you that you are under oath.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John. Just before you get into your testimony, could you please provide the board with your background and credentials?
My name is John Kuybida Architect. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I have a Master of Architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology in the year 2009. I have testified before numerous zoning and planning board meetings, and the latest ones were Orange, New Jersey, Tenafly, New Jersey, and maybe Roseland, New Jersey, or three of the recent ones I can think of. Yes, yes, it is.
All right, great. The board accepts you as an expert. Thank you.
Yes, I am. So, can everyone see the image on the screen? So, I'm showing the rendering of the proposed portico share.
Yeah, why don't we, do you want to mark the whole slide presentation as A1, and then number the slides, or?
Mr. Oliver, when you refer to the slide presentation.
Well, I don't know what's coming after this, so, yeah.
Sure. Why don't we do that?
Okay. And we have that whole thing, like, you submitted everything that you're about to show us, right, digitally?
This may not necessarily cover everything.
Yes.
If you didn't submit any of the materials, there were four separate pieces that I sent in the approach last week that would not cover them.
Okay, so why don't we just mark them as they come, then, all four separately?
So, this will call architectural, color art architectural rendering. Okay. So, the image on the screen is depicting a new portico share, fancy word for a covered vehicle drop-off area. So, this will be in the front of the existing two-story building. So, the addition is the taller portion that has the series of columns, which is an area of 52 by 62. So, that is, in essence, what's the project, the new addition, which I'll refer to. That's what I'll be speaking about, is this new covered vehicle canopy. The reason why we're proposing this is because part of the operations and New Jersey state law requires that when you have an adult daycare facility, that you need to provide coverage when there's inclement weather, or if it's raining, this way, so participants can ingress or ingress to the building safely. That is why we're proposing to have this new portico share. And I'd just like to point out a few other items. You can kind of get a colorized, you know, in addition to showing the new addition and how it matches the overall aesthetics of the building, you know, the signage as well will be, the colors on here is accurate as well, so the senior, senior life will be colorized black, and the life will be blue as well, and those will be just internally illuminated and channel block letters with aluminum housing. Can I just?
And just for the record, that sign that's on A1 is fully compliant with the ordinance, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, so on that, on that note, we based that on a 5% max of the front elevation, so we had calculated it at 1,744 square feet, and then if you take 5% of that, that gives you 87 square feet maximum that would be allowed, and our sign is less than that. I believe it's, I believe it's 63, 65. So, the next image that I would be showing on the screen is the civil drawing, and this is a colorized rendering of that.
Yeah, so why don't we mark as exhibit A2, it's a colorized rendering of the site plan that was submitted with the application materials.
And that's sheet three?
This was a version of sheet three that has been colorized and updated. So, all right, so just to orient everybody, and so we're all speaking about the same properties of the project, so the site orientation, so plan north is north on the sheet, south would be on the bottom, east would be on the right, and west would be on the left of the page. So, the state highway, Route 202-206, is on the right side of the page. On our site, there is a main circulation path that is on the southern side, and this main circulation path not only connects to the building, but it has three distinct parking areas, so it does provide circulation to all three spaces. The, the building is a two-story structure that is built into the grade, so just to quickly go over the grading, the first floor is about 12 feet, is approximately 12 feet higher than the second floor, and that is the difference. So, from right to left on the site, it will slope about 12 feet. So, the original design of the building took advantage of the natural topography, so each floor has direct access to the grade and makes it easier just for ADA accessibility and getting in and out of the building. Okay, so the, again, and the three main parking spaces are connected by existing concrete So, that's the, the basic lay of the land. And our project, the portico share, new addition, is in the front, like I had mentioned previously, the size of that is 62 feet by 52 feet, and that is shown in the darker brown color here.
You had mentioned earlier that the, the requirement to have a portico share is something that's incorporated into the state law for facilities of this kind. Is the size also dictated by that same law, or is that something that you chose, and if so, why did you choose that size?
That is a great question. So, we had, we had chosen this size, and we thought it was adequate based on operations on, in the morning and at night during drop-off and taking the participants home, that it was having four vehicles parked in tandem in two different lanes was ideal, all right, because there's 15 buses that will, maximum of 15 buses. So, we wanted to kind of really fit the size of the building and the aesthetic, and at the same time, you know, make sure the operational, that it was efficient.
Thank you.
So, in the front of the building, we do have the portico share. We will be redoing the parking, and we have restriped this area. We are showing six, nine parking spaces here. We do have a few visitor spaces on the right side of the striping. We will be doing new sidewalks in front of the building. I'm hoping that you could see my cursor here. So, there will be part of it where we will be doing the curbing and sidewalks. In addition to that, we want to make sure that our participants will be entering the building safely, so we will have depress curbs so they can get inside the building safely, and part of the entrance will be updated as well. So, as part of this application, we're not increasing any of the impervious area, so the portico share would in essence be capturing the same storm, stormwater. And the last part of this is there is an existing turnaround circle here, so we wanted to make use of that, and it, we selected a bus that will in fact turn around in this circle. We have a turning study that we have identified, and in the maximum bus that we have identified as well. I apologize for the boo-boo here. Now, we're drawing two here, we.
Just for the record, that's the architectural drawings that were submitted with the application. Where's that, the site plan?
That is part of the civil package.
Okay, yeah, we just want to be clear for the record.
I'm not going to mark that, right? That's our package.
That's part of this civil site plan set, that was part of the package, yes.
So, on the page two of that drawing, the turning diagram, I promise it is on here, if I zoom in, it will minimize, but we do show a bus on here that is the maximum. It fits the operations of, of senior Somerset, senior life, and that will be the maximum bus that we will use, so we will not be modifying that turnaround. The larger buses that we'll be utilizing will be in the far rear parking lot. I hesitate to keep flipping back and forth, but I'm going to do it anyway.
So, it looks like the middle two rows look over the side.
Yes, so, on the far rear parking lot, we do have 15 bus stalls, yes, and that was calculated into our maximum parking spaces.
And that's going to be new striping back there in that lot, is that correct?
That is correct, and actually, this whole paving, this whole area is in kind of disrepair, so we are going to modernize that and make sure it looks nice and neat. So, we'll be restriping it and repaving it as well. And since we're talking about modernizing it, the existing concrete sidewalks, we're going to make sure there's going to be ADA depress curbs. So, you know, the employees of senior life will be able to park in this rear parking lot and then be able to walk safely to get into the building, and when the employees enter the building, we want to make sure that they enter through mainly the side exit.
There's an access way that leads from the rear parking area to the parking area behind the building that is southernmost, or to the south of your site on 202-206. You can see it on the bill, on the drawing. Is there any kind of agreement in place that says they can't use your lot, you can't use their lot, that would stop your lot from being swamped from people from that office building, parking in your bus spots, or anyplace else?
Is there soon, that is a big question.
Yeah, oh, I can address that. I think we do have an owner's representative here this evening that can address that question. I don't know if you would like me to bring them up as these questions arise, because there are, there is certain knowledge that only the owner has, and that's within their discretion.
I'd like to get through this first.
Yeah.
Important question, so when we bring up the building, why don't we make sure we circle back to that question?
That's fine, and just for the record, the owner will be able to testify as to the other tenants in the building and how they use their properties, and number of people, and things of that nature. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question while you're talking about sidewalks? I'm familiar with the building, I just don't remember. When you go and you drop the bus off with the seniors there, outside of the curb, is there any steps going in, or is it just the curb that you have to?
So, as part of the application, we will be redoing right in front of the entrance of the building. We're going to kind of redo that and make sure that, we're going to remove any steps, so there's that.
Is it going to be just like, you could just like level bend going into the entrance?
Yeah, it's going to flatten out, and it'll be ADA compliant, so as, you know, we'll demo it all out in front of the building there, and as I kind of show on the screen here, it'll get regraded, so it'll be able to safely walk in.
Regretted how?
There will be, let's see here, we're going to construct a full-depth pavement kind of repair, and the pavement will be sloped and angled accordingly, so there will be no step.
There's no step at all, it's, so if somebody needs assistance, they won't have to make step up or anything?
That's correct, yes. We're going to, as it is now, there is a step, and we feel that is unsafe and it is tripping hazard, so we're going to be removing that and then installing this new full-depth pavement repair, as we're showing on the drawing.
So, anybody would then have no trouble going in or out? Okay, thank you.
That is correct. I guess two last points on the site. So, there's existing site lighting here now, so we're going to maintain the existing site holes, and there's two actual light fixtures in the middle of the building, excuse me, middle parking lot that we will be replacing, and they will be LED lights, and we do have a drawing that shows the foot candles. So, we want to make sure that the site lighting at nighttime is safe from the far rear parking lot and all the way to the, to the front of the building. So, because of that fact, we felt it was insufficient light, the foot candles at nighttime, so we're going to be replacing that. And the last point, I don't know if I mentioned that the concrete curb in the, in the rear of the building, that is the first level, we're going to be removing the width of the entire building, we're removing that concrete sidewalk and curb and reinstalling a brand-new, make sure it is ADA compliant, because as it is currently, it is not ADA compliant. And the right, so, in the middle of the page where I have the cursor, there's an existing, it's stone pad, it, it's what is shown here in the dash lines, and it is wide enough to have the four dumpsters here. There's currently four shown on the right, and we're going to be adding two additional as part of this application.
There'll be six handicap spots are shown, correct, in the, in the improved area behind the building?
That is correct. Yeah, we will, we'll make sure that all the handicap spaces are in the back. Yes, we had, in the front of the building, we had, there was shown, I believe, one ADA space, but due to existing grades, it's actually not ADA compliant, and... And we felt it was unsafe to show an ADA compliant parking spot, so we are showing all our ADA spots in the rear of the building. So that's, so in the front of the building is where the visitors for, that'll be attending the adult daycare center will be parking. So there's four on the right side of the parking lot and then just, you know, five additional. We are, you know, I'll mention it one more time, we are proposing a four inch wide yellow striping and we will be restriping this whole area as well.
The way you're set up with the portico share to accommodate the buses that will be coming in, bringing the clients or patients into the facility, you just mentioned an ADA space that you're not going to have there any longer. Will people be able to drop off people who require that kind of accommodation other than the buses? Other vehicles, will they be allowed to use that same portico share to drop people off at the building?
So the way it is currently set up now, that portico share is just for the operations of Senior Life. It will not be for any other tenants in the building.
You don't anticipate anybody requiring an ADA compliant spot in the front any longer and rather you're going to have them around the back as you had depicted?
Yes, so the building currently has an elevator, so if, if one, if, let's say there's a tenant on the second floor, they would be able to park in this rear parking lot and be able to use the elevator to go up to that second floor.
Okay.
We have, you know, the access and circulation accounted for.
I'm just curious as to how clear that would be to somebody coming into the building, seeing this portico share, thinking that'd be a great way for me to get in, but that's only for the entrance to the facility.
That's correct.
Okay.
One more thing, the rear parking lot is in horrendous shape currently. Do you, will you totally repave and refinish that, the entire rear lot?
Yes. So if you could see the difference in the shading, so we have a darker gray and there's the dash line here, everything that's shown to the left of that will be milled, removed, and then repaved as part of the application, and we will be restriping it. So we will have a two inch pavement overlay and four inch wide white striping.
Thank you.
I guess one last point I'd like to make, just to expand upon how the circulation of the building is going to work from a vehicle standpoint. So the front of the building will be for the Senior Life facility and then in the back of the building, because there will be and continue to be other tenants in the building, on the lower level, there's a medical office and then there's also a child daycare. So the child daycare will be utilizing the middle parking lot here, which I believe is 39 parking spots, and there are peak times of dropping off children and picking up is either usually like eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock at night. So mainly this parking lot will be, majority of the time utilized just for that operations of picking up and dropping off and then the parents leave. And then during the day, the tenants can, you know, park here. That's kind of the operations of it. And then the rear parking lot will be used for our tenant space. It'll be for the 15 buses and then for employee parking.
And John, just so the record is clear, and I think it's obvious from your colored rendering, which is A1, my client's proposing to lease the second floor of the building. Now, the second floor of the building though is at grade along 202, 206, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, and the other uses you just mentioned are on the first floor of the building, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and either the doctor's office or the child daycare, none of the customers, patrons or employees would be using the portico share entrance on the second floor, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Are there any, I'm going to move to the architecturals unless there's any?
Yeah, unless there are any questions, I think he's ready to move on to the floor plan.
Yeah, any further board questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, okay, so let's talk about the portico share. Is there a parapet on that? It looks, it looks, looks big, it looks thick. Can we pull back up that original image and just, is there, is there a parapet?
Yes, there is a parapet.
And then if you can just, I hate to take Mr. Burr's stage, I know he'll ask about drainage, so while you're at it, why don't you just talk about the drainage and then how tall the parapet is and?
I'll refer to the architectural drawings in a minute, but yeah, there is going to be a parapet on the building. So the way the drainage works, I'll go backwards, so the drainage, it's, majority, it's, this is going to be constructed out of steel, steel columns and then open bar joists. So that'll be the construction of it. There's four sets of two columns. One is decorative on each of these two columns, so one will be structural, one will be decorative. And then in the far rear right, that's where I plan to put one of the roof drains. It'll be kind of internally drained and then we'll dump that stormwater into the existing inlet. So that's how we'll be handling the stormwater, the existing, so that's how we'll be handling the storm. And yes, we do have the parapet and the parapet was an attempt to hide the sloping of the insulation required to drain to the parapet, excuse me, to the internal drain. I'll go to the architectural drawings so I can look at the building elevations, because I do have some heights on there. Okay, so this is the architectural drawing A2 is what I'll be referring to. So... So the, how we determine the height, so we determined the height because we wanted to maintain 14 feet clear from the grade to the underside of the portico share. We were trying to keep in mind that there's going to be deliveries, you know, there's going to be trucks coming here and then if, sometimes, you know, if there's an emergency vehicle that needs to come, I want to make sure that they're going to be able to kind of get underneath of this. So that's kind of how we established the baseline of the portico share. And then, you know, with a structure of this magnitude, you're going to have about three feet of structure and then, you know, we have a suspended ceiling underneath that, you know, I think maybe 12 feet. So, and then that leaves you with a parapet above the roof and we're trying to conceal a lot of the sloping insulation. So it does look, you know, does it look super tall? I don't, I would argue no, but the front of the building now, it does have the center portion where the 757 is, it is kind of raised up now, so we only plan to raise that up another foot. So, you know, we're trying to keep in line in the original ten of the building. So that center of the building, that 757 helps identify that front entrance, even though in this picture, you do see a lot of black and it is shaded, but that is storefront and that kind of helps signify the entrance of the building. So we just really want to take that and just push it out.
So the baseline height you've established because you want to accommodate certain vehicles. And then once you've got the baseline or the ceiling height, the height of the parapet itself was determined to mimic what exists currently because it actually goes above it in your drawings. And could it be made somewhat smaller if you chose to or is there a requirement you're trying to meet that we just don't see yet?
So, yes, we did make an attempt to kind of conceal what was going on with the sloped insulation and...
I'm sorry, you're starting to trail off a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we tried to attempt to hide the structure behind it and the sloping tapered insulation, so that was the main intent and yes, we did really try to mimic the 557. You know, we didn't want to make it too thin because we felt it becomes too thin, doesn't have enough mass, enough structure and, you know, architecturally, the massing, you know, it sometimes is a fine, a fine line, does it look nice, is it overly designed? You know, we thought it really mimicked what was there and if you look at the existing picture above, that five, the 757, it is actually a little bit thicker, so we really, you know, we didn't want to mimic that exactly, so...
It's, correct me if I'm wrong, you're zooming in, I don't want to disrupt everything by flipping to the page, is it six foot, six inches or is it eight foot, six inches? Even with my readers, I...
So it is six foot, six.
Okay, all right.
So in terms of the zoning, it complies with the height, right under the height. You know, at one point, you know, you have to kind of remember, this building, it is, the structure of it, I think it's 100 feet wide and it only has a center row of columns on the upper level, so I am severely limited what I could put on the existing roof. So if I need to put equipment on this building, I'm going to look to the portico share to put, you know, equipment on this building. So that's another reason why I have that parapet at six foot, six and that's kind of driving a lot of decisions. Because if you look at, I don't know if I can get into this, but the building across the highway?
I'm sorry, you can, but it's irrelevant right now. I'm just more interested in your rationale for designing it the way you did, what you're trying to accommodate, and then from there, you know, we're going to assume that that's your professional judgment and we'll move forward on that basis.
Any other board questions? Board professionals, please.
I'm mostly going to have questions about the interior, but can you just clarify, so if you are going to mount any equipment, meaning utilities like air conditioning, heating units, things like that, you're going to mount them on the portico share?
I'm not saying I'm definitely going to do that, I'm just, I wanted to kind of leave my options open in terms of what I can do. That was part of the reason, yes.
Okay, and can you just clarify, I think I misheard, the parapet actually, the height of it, the full height of it is six foot, six and that's the full clearance behind, like so if you were going to put something there, it's, it would screen something?
Yeah, that is correct, it is six foot, six in height. And yeah, the intent is to screen equipment if in fact I need to. I'm not saying I'm definitely going to do it, but that was, that's the original intent on why we chose six foot, six. We thought it was enough to hide the existing structure and if we, in the event we had to put equipment on the roof, it would conceal it, especially as you're approaching from the highway. You know, it's one thing to stand in front of the site, but if you go, you're looking at the building to the right, the grade and the topography is actually a little bit higher, so you would see something on the roof more from that part of the site as opposed to standing in front of it or to the left in this picture.
And where are the mechanicals presently, are they just ground mounted on the site?
There's a few rooftop equipment on the roof presently and it is screened and then also on the, let's see, I'm showing the A1 drawing, in the upper right hand corner, there's, and these are pad mounted on grade, that these are existing chillers for the heating and cooling of the building.
That's all I have for right now.
I have a few questions. So just from an aesthetic point of view, the building that exists today will stay as far as the existing color, materials, et cetera, and your plan is to match the new portico share with the existing building? Is that, that's the proposal?
Yes, that is correct.
And access wise, I think you had indicated that you're going to have a main entrance in front of the building, but that there will also be secondary access from the rear first floor of the building, which is where the new, the six new ADA parking spaces will be? So is there, is there a lobby entrance on the first floor that visitors that want to come up to the second floor will have access to the elevator, is that, and then the daycare has a separate entrance? How is that interior space set up?
That's a great question. So the way the building is currently, zoom in a little bit here, so the...
Identify the sheet that you're referring to for the record.
This is A1 on the architectural drawings. So the tenant space that we're occupying is exactly the existing, same size as the existing tenant space. And I will just quickly highlight with the cursor where that existing space is that we'll be taking. Okay, so on this second floor, there's two tenant spaces, basically ironed out here and then there are two enclosed stairways and then there's also two stairways that are not enclosed and an elevator. So all four of these stairs go to each floor. There are common bathrooms and then there's also a common hallway. So we want to make sure this facility is secure and to enter this building, you have to be identified and you need, you need an appointment. If you don't have an appointment, you can't get in the building unless you're buzzed in and you're escorted around. So even if you wanted to come in, we do have security and access in place. The doors, the way we have the doors working is there will be a keypad at minimum, so if you work here, you will know the keypad and you will be able to open up the doors to get into the tenant suites. So there's a few different doors that we have, one, two, three main doors off the common hallway, so those will have the keypad. And so that's how we're handling access. In the event that someone, a visitor can't park on the second, excuse me, at the second level out front and they need to have an ADA spot, they would be able to park in the back and they could use the AD access into the building and use the elevator. But, you know, again, they would be identified beforehand and then, you know, operationally they would kind of be let in through one of the secured doors.
And then you had testified that the westerly or the rearmost parking lot that's going to get repaved, that's generally going to be used for bus parking and employee parking?
That is correct, yes.
And then any visitors to this facility would either park in the front or in the middle area, but they will have to coexist with other parking on site for the other tenants, right?
So in the event that there's a visitor, and it's going to be a seldom event from my understanding, it's not going to be very often, they will park in the front by the portico share in the striped areas, so that's where we anticipate the visitors. And if you needed additional clarification, we do have someone from operations to testify to that. So we do expect that it will happen in the front of the building. In the extreme seldom event that they need to use the ADA spot, they would use and share in the back. But we don't expect that to be often, yes.
Have you seen the memo from our fire marshal by chance?
Yes, yes, I have.
He commented that the existing fire connection is, I believe, building mounted on the front of the building and that with the proposed improvements, he recommended that be moved out further into the lawn space?
Correct.
Is that something that will be addressed as part of this application?
I think we could work with you in identifying a spot that works for both of us. Yes, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, very good. As far as new exterior lighting is concerned, is there anything that's proposed with the portico share? Is there recessed lighting, are there sconces, is there anything other than the existing, you know, light poles that are going to be, going to be upgraded?
Yeah, underneath the portico share, we do have the ceiling grid and in that ceiling grid and tiles, we will have light and light fixtures and we do depict that on our lighting civil drawing, so we will have the lights, you know, underneath the portico share to illuminate it.
Anything building mounted wise?
No, we do not.
Okay.
It'll just be the existing light poles that we're going to continue to use.
The existing site lighting and then the recessed lights that are proposed, okay?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And the, you had mentioned the signage that's proposed on the front of the building. Are there any changes being proposed to the existing freestanding sign that's near the entrance driveway? Does that stay the same, the way it is?
The freestanding sign itself will stay as it is, but we will be adding our plate for Senior Life on there. for senior life on there.
Understood, but the overall sign itself?
No, we're not going to be-
Is unchanged?
Correct.
I noticed on, I don't know if it was the Reynolds Plan, or your plans, that on the north side of the existing building, there's a little fenced-in enclosed area that I assume may be related to the daycare, but I wasn't sure, is that, is that for an existing tenant, or is there going to be any exterior spaces allotted for this particular use? I may have actually seen it on an aerial.
On the fencing on the northern side, that's at grade, there is a white vinyl fence that's for the child daycare facility.
That's like a playground?
Yeah, that's existing, and we're not going to be touching that, so that won't be part of our application.
Okay, are there any exterior spaces set up for this use, or is it all inside the building?
It's all inside.
It is?
Yes.
Alright. You had mentioned that there are two new dumpsters being proposed or provided for this use on existing stone pad, I think you mentioned?
Yeah, correct.
Are the existing dumpsters inside an enclosure now, is there any type of enclosure, and if not, are you proposing to construct an enclosure to house the dumpsters?
You know, that's a good question, they're not actually on a dumpster, that area we found out is wetlands-sensitive, so we actually aren't allowed to build a masonry wall in there to screen that off, so building something in that kind of area is going to be very challenging, if not outright, we just can't do it.
Perhaps fencing of some sort that doesn't encroach any of the flow of water underneath could be considered?
Yeah, I think the applicant will agree, if we were to be approved as a condition of approval, to do what kind of fencing or enclosure that would be permitted under DEP regulations because of the wetland-sensitive area.
Very good, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I have a quick question, we talked about parking before, an operation like this requires quite a few employees, where are the employees going to park?
The employees will park in that far rear parking lot.
Are being on the first floor level or the second floor?
So it'll be on the western side of the site, so it'll be essentially at the lower level, the first level.
So what's easiest way then for them to enter, through the first floor and go up, or walk all the way up the incline to the first floor?
That's a great question, so-
I mean, I've been to the building, and I used to do stuff there, and it was always an issue.
So, great question, but we anticipate that they won't be using where the portico share is, but more of the entrance that's kind of in the middle of the building, so you won't have to walk up the incline.
I believe there's one right on, like, in the middle on the side, when you're walking up the sidewalk on the, if I recall.
Correct.
They can go in there and, does that then enter at the second floor level?
Yeah, so they'll enter at grade on the lower level, and then they'll either have to use the stairs or the elevator, and then get to the second floor, and then enter our space, excuse me, our space through either keypad, well, it will be-
Is to walk from that parking all the way in the back, all the way up front, that's a long walk, especially if it's raining, snow, cold, or 100 degrees out. So you said, so like I say, if you go in the back or on the side, that's, okay, so there'd be plenty of parking there for the employees?
Oh yeah, there'll be plenty of parking, yes.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, on the planner's memo, number six, page nine, talking about landscaping. Hey, Mr. Plucker, I saw that you had a response memo, and in there you said the facility was fully developed, and you really had no plans for landscaping, and that's a little disappointing, I wonder if we can talk about that?
Yeah, well, I can make a representation like I did with the dumpsters, there is no landscaping proposed with this plan, but obviously, I, we understand the board's interests, we're proposing a new portico share, a new entrance, and the applicant would agree to work with the owner and the township professionals in adding some landscaping that's acceptable to the town as a condition of approval.
How about the comment, quote, "We note that the existing islands are proposed to be removed from the rear parking lot, can these be retained for landscape trees?"
You know, the way I could kind of answer that, so the way I understand it is because of how narrow they are, that, you know, it's really hard to maintain them and keep them, you know, properly hydrated, so they just kind of keep dying over and over, it's actually fairly common in New Jersey, especially with the changes of seasons, and, you know, salting of, you know, the pavement to make sure it doesn't ice over.
It would be more feasible if the islands were larger, but, but that's not the, can't be the case here.
Alright, so it sounds like your applicant's going to work with our township planner, and they're going to come up with a mutually beneficial plan here?
That would be acceptable to the applicant, yes.
That'd be a condition of approval, yes, alright, thank you. Alright, I'm going to open this up to members of the public that would like to ask questions on any architecture testimony they've heard this evening. Now's the time to come up and ask questions. Alright, see none? Your next witness, please.
Oh, actually, yeah, can you just give a brief overview of the internal floor plan?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we should just do that, and then-
I'm just going to open it up again after that, to members of the public, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I'm going to refer to A1, the architectural upper floor plan, I just wanted to just quickly go through how the floor plan's laid out, just so we're all on the same page. So, on the right-hand side, we talked about the portico share for the covering of the buses, and then you will enter in the middle here at the vestibule, the vestibule will have secured locked doors, and so in order to get to the first vestibule, you know, either need keypad access, or you ring the bell and they let you in. So we have, so just high level, how the plan is oriented, on the bottom of the page, we will have the four dayrooms for the adult daycare, we figure 80% of the participants will be in this dayroom area, the top portion of the plan, starting from the upper right, will be a shipping-receiving for deliveries, whether it's food, whether it's dry goods, things like that, so we'll have a little small shipping-receiving area, then we have a planned kitchen area, which will be more of a warming-type kitchen for already-prepped food meals, that'll be warmed up, and then distributed during the day as needed, and then in the top portion, from the middle, kind of towards the left of the page, this will be more clinical, think of like, medical, like, exam, and just getting checkups, things like that, maybe some small minor dental checkups, things like that, so this is really just medical-type, all the way to the left is like the business for just dealing with the participants, onboarding new customers as needed, and then in the central spine of the building is more of service-type and support, so you'll have the program, you have the receptionist off the entrance in the vestibule, program director, and then you just work down, social workers, you have the showers, and then you have the laundry area, and then towards the back here is really support for the employee lounge. So, everyone, the adults will be within the confines of this space, we don't need them to leave, so it's all keypad and secured, so they can't get out, we have provided enough bathrooms for, inside the facility, there was a regulation on how many bathrooms you had to provide, so we have more than adequate enough, and there is a common bathroom here, that's actually in the common hallway, that is going to be used for the employees, and the employees only, the participants won't be using that, and then the balance of the floor is the existing common corridor, and the bottom-left, that gray area, is existing office space. That's the quick-
Existing office space for what purpose?
It's an adjacent tenant.
Okay.
Yeah, pardon me, adjacent tenant, which we anticipate office space. And again, we, so underneath of us is an existing child daycare center, the stair that I'm highlighting here on the right, we don't anticipate them having to use, if they do in fact need to use it, it will be in the event of emergency, and an alarm would go off, so they wouldn't be able to use that door during the day, and if it does, we would be notified immediately, and then the rest of the stairs, or even the elevator, we don't have to worry about unauthorized access. That's just a quick, high-level overview of the floor plan.
Alright, thank you. Last call for questions, members of the public, questions? Thank you.
Thanks a lot, John, the applicant calls Mark Irwin.
I'm just standing here.
That works.
I've been sitting too long, alright.
Mr. Irwin, I'll just remind you that you are under oath.
Understood.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Irwin, could you just give the board, you're testifying here as a fact witness, but just give them a brief overview of your position with the applicant, and your background?
Certainly, I've been in healthcare for over 30 years, and have been running the PACE program in different regions since 2006.
Okay, great, and what are your current, what's your current title?
My current title is Chief Operating Officer of the Senior Life Program.
Okay, and your duties and responsibilities for Senior Life?
I'm responsible for all aspects of the program, operations, regulatory compliance, as well as development of new businesses.
Okay, and just, you can confirm that Senior Life presently has a lease for the subject premises?
Confirmed.
Okay, and explain, you mentioned the word PACE, we did, why don't we mark as A3, there was kind of an infographic, a colorized infographic, that just gives a, thought it would be a good illustrative tool for the board members, just to kind of see the different services that PACE provides, so can you just explain the type of business that's going to be operated here, explain what the PACE program is?
Certainly, and again, thank you for allowing me to present and answer questions regarding the PACE program. The PACE program is actually a Medicare program, the PACE acronym is the Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, New Jersey is one of 31 states that has adopted the PACE program as part of the Medicaid program, so most of the participants are duly eligible for both Medicare and Medicaid. What the PACE acronym again stands for is Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, and what we are trying to do, our mission is to help nursing facility clinically-eligible folks, seniors, that are over the age of 55, maintain their independence in the community, and not have to go to a nursing home, and we do this for as long as possible. Now, we do use the continuum, we do use nursing homes for both short-term and long-term stays, but they remain a member and a participant of our program. We're able to keep over 90% of our participants in the community by surrounding them with care and services from our team, that includes physician, nursing, physical, occupational, speech therapists, RNs, social workers, dieticians, we provide home care, all the transportation that we've talked about tonight, we surround our seniors with whatever that they might need to help them maintain their independence and remain in the community where they want to be for as long as possible. And again, we provide, we're not only the direct provider, we also engage other folks in our network, specialists, hospitals, ambulance services, durable medical equipment, oxygen, whatever these folks need, we might make repairs to their homes, put ramps in their homes to help them be more accessible to their own residents in their homes, whatever they need to be successful in that community setting. All the services that I've just described can be done here at the facility, which we are proposing tonight, but most importantly, we take all those services to them where they live, they spend most of their time in their home, and we want to make sure that they can maintain their safety in their home, so the physician, the nurses, the therapist, they do all the things that they can do at the center, they do in their home, and bring those services to them in their community setting. In terms of how often folks come to the center, each person has care planned differently, some folks choose not to come very often, they like to be at home, believe it or not, and they come maybe once a month, we do have some dementia patients who can't safely be left in their community setting, maybe they live with their daughter, the daughter has to work, so they come to the center five days a week, and we take care of them from about, you know, 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning till 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon, before we take them back home. Each person's care plan is different, it's individualized to make sure that we meet their needs, on average, I'd say most participants come about three times a week, and our capacity for the program, we've done a demographic study for Somerset County, and we anticipate that based upon the demographics for this county, we anticipate the program to grow over several years to about 160 participants, think of that more of like a 160-bed nursing home. At the center, only about 40% of the folks attend on a daily basis, so not all 160 people are coming, our maximum daily attendance, we would anticipate at this location would be 60 to 70 people per day, at a maximum, and that's not for a few years, that will actually happen for about three to four years down the road, but that number can change, again, as people's needs change, we change, and we develop their care plan around them, and we can change on a dime, if they fall and get hurt, we can change your care plan and increase their center attendance, increase their home care, whatever it takes to help them maintain their independence and ability to stay at home where they want to be. I don't want to get too far into it, I'm here to answer questions.
Alright, I just have a couple of more things for you, Mark.
Sure.
I think, I think the planning-engineering letter brought up, this is a licensed and regulated program, but state and federal, is that correct?
Yes, it's regulated by-
Explain that to the board.
Sure, so certainly, it's regulated by Medicare, they do ongoing surveys and ongoing oversight, and the state also joins with them and partners with the feds to also provide a significant regulatory oversight presence as well.
Okay, great, and I think you hit most of the points that we wanted to bring out, I think it came up with the architect's testimony, are there really visitors that come to this facility?
The visitors are infrequent, a family can come in with their loved one for a family meeting to discuss the care plan, to discuss their, their issues that they may be having medically, and to help care plan, make sure that the care plan meets their needs, so family members are certainly welcome to attend the center, to meet with the medical professionals to discuss the care plan, but again, that's an infrequent basis.
Okay, great, and just the last area, I guess, would be the number of employees, how they work, how they work, if they work in shift, the number of employees, just so the board can get an idea of how many people are coming and going, and how many people will be there at certain times.
Certainly, the hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, so the employees will be coming in about a little bit before 8:00 AM, and they actually are leaving typically earlier than 4:30, because again, while they are attending to some of the folks that do come on a daily basis, much of what they do is dispersed into the community to go to the homes of the seniors that we are privileged to serve in that community setting, so many of them are leaving earlier in the day to disperse and take care of folks in the community setting, so, but there are people there on-site until up to 4:30 PM.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for you, Mark.
I have a question, you didn't get the number of employees.
Oh, I'm sorry, at maximum capacity, there would be about 40 employees, four zero, yes, four, 40 employees, and again, that will, we'll probably initially start out with about two dozen, and that will grow up to 40 as our capacity grows and our census grows.
Everybody in this circle of support, these people are all full-time members of the organization?
The staff?
Do you have a registered nurse, a recreation therapist?
Yes, those are full-time employees.
And there's one of them, two of them?
It depends upon the discipline, for example, we have one nurse for every 25 members, so as our census grows, we continue to add staff as the population grows.
And it says here, primary care provider, so there's a doctor on call as well, or?
There's a full-time physician on premise, again, he might be part-time initially, but eventually full-time.
Thank you.
Certainly, and those professionals are available just programmatically, they're available to our, to our seniors 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even though the facility's closed, we still have a nurse that's on call, and a physician that's on call to meet any questions or issues that come up after hours.
So, this is all paid for through Medicare?
Medicare and Medicaid, both, they both pay a capitated payment to the provider, to us, and we become responsible to meet all of the needs, hospitalizations, ambulance rides, medications, all the direct services we've talked about, so we're responsible as both the provider and the payer, it's a very unique integrated model, it's very successful, and frankly, the best, best long-term care model available.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You said that most of the participants still live at home, let's use as an example?
Yes.
So then you go, your bus goes to each of the house and picks them up?
That's correct, we take them to, we pick them up with our transportation service, and we bring them to the center, but we also take them to any medical appointments that they have, so if they have to go see- So if they have to go see an optometrist, or the dentist, or they have a cardiologist's appointment, or need an x-ray, we would pick them up at their home, take them to that appointment, and return them back home.
So they basically become a member of your group then?
Yes.
In a sense?
That's correct.
It's not just a, you drop them off, they do whatever during the day, you're actually taking care of a lot of their life activities?
It's very all-inclusive, and it's a very integrated model, so we become both clinically and financially responsible for their care.
Okay. So you could have somebody that you're taking to two appointments on one of your buses, and they actually never make it to the center that day?
That's very possible, yes.
That's why you're saying the average is 60, 70 a day at max?
Yes, yes, just because they have an appointment that we're caring for them doesn't mean they're coming to the center, so that's true.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure. So if I think I understand your question, CMS doesn't set how many, they don't set a cap on how many people can enroll in the program. That's set by the Medicaid program, the state actually determines how many folks can be enrolled in the program. Currently, there's not a cap on the amount of people who enroll, so it's up to us to help the community understand the program, and it's up to the state to approve people who would be eligible for the program. They have to approve that they are nursing facility clinically-eligible or sick enough to be in the program. They approve who can enroll in the program, and they set, if they want to, they can set a cap on how many people could be in the program. Based on our demographic study, we think that's the number of PACE eligibles and a market penetration of about 15%. We think that's about 160 people that would be participating in the program at max capacity, which again, takes a few years to get to.
The state controls that, or Medicare?
The state controls, it's over, it's regulated by Medicare and Medicaid, so both Medicare and the state. But they let the state determine how many enrollees are, that they want to have enrolled. Yeah, well, it's a capitated payment program, the Medicare pays us a certain amount, and that's different for every individual based upon their acuity. And then the state pays us a capitated amount. So we join those two revenue pools, that money's pulled together, and then we are fully at risk for whatever happens to them. So we may, we may not do well on some folks because they've had a hospitalization or heart surgery, and many things have happened to them, and then the other folks that we, we pull those resources together to cover everybody's needs. So the state pays us a flat fixed amount, Medicare pays us a different amount based upon their acuity. It's kind of complex, but that's just the rules that they've set. I hope that answered your question. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Irwin, what, if any, relationship would there be between your Senior Life Center and the senior centers that are already in town, whether they're municipal-run or county-run or whatever?
Sure, so we offer a very similar service, but we recognize that some folks, that they want to maintain their relationship with their physician, so we certainly allow that. The same thing for the adult daycare. Some folks have a friendship group or a neighborhood group that they enjoy attending a certain adult daycare. So we would actually contract with them to pay them to allow that participant who's under our care now to continue to attend that adult daycare. So they could attend ours, but if they already have an established relationship somewhere that they don't want to disrupt, we would be the payer to send them to that established adult daycare.
Thank you. I have a question.
At least, that's my perspective, that you're providing something special beyond what the senior centers-
Yes, we do that, we provide the activities, we provide meals for them onsite, we provide the transportation at our cost. But to your point, we also provide therapy services onsite. We can provide showers, as the architect described, so there's personal care, and we even bring in their laundry. You know, and since we're fully at risk as the provider and the payer, you know, and that person has a laundry machine that's down in their basement and they're a fall risk, it's a lot better for us to bring their laundry in and do their laundry for them than to find them at the bottom of those steps injured. It's a lot less costly for us to do a couple loads of laundry and make sure that their laundry needs are met than for them to take the risk of going downstairs and doing their laundry. So we do all those traditional things, and then the medical component on top of that, and the risk management component on top of that, does make this a very successful and useful model.
Yes, sir. What was, I believe it was said before, I forget, what was the age of, that you can start in your program?
It's age 55 and up.
All right, so my question is, you do Medicare/Medicaid, do you have any interaction with New Jersey DDD?
No, not, no, there would not.
Okay, so you're just the Medicare/Medicaid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. What are the furthest communities this facility will serve? Like, where, how far are the participants, where they reside?
The, New Jersey has awarded us all of Somerset County, so anything within the Somerset County lines that they want to join the program, our services would reach them.
Okay, thank you.
Senior Life have other facilities that they're operating currently in other counties?
We operate in 13 counties in Pennsylvania. We're the largest PACE program in the state of Pennsylvania.
This will be your first in New Jersey?
This is our first in New Jersey, yes, one of two. We're also developing a site in Passaic County.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Irwin, thank you for your letter, July 11, 2024. I should have a question about Senior Life. You're a for-profit?
Yes, sir.
And where are your offices based out of?
Our offices are based out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
And following up to Mr. Kulak, this will be your first New Jersey-run facility?
That's correct. We had to go through an application process through the state of New Jersey, and we are awarded two counties.
And which agency awards that, again?
It's the Medicaid Agency, it's the-
And what would be the closest contingent facility to this?
Our closest facility to here is in Bethlehem, PA, Lehigh Valley. We have 400 participants in a facility there.
Again, Senior Life is for-profit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Or professionals?
I know this question's been asked a few times, so I don't want to belabor it. So the program is entirely regulated through the Medicaid or Medicare?
Yes, for both.
And so, in, you know, similar but different facilities like assisted living and memory care, those have regulatory requirements through the state as far as licensing. This has no licensing regulations through the state of New Jersey?
No, there's not technically a license, but there is a provider contract.
Okay, and that's, I guess?
And a set of regulations, yeah, codified.
As far as some of those, kind of the responsibilities as a provider, when you take on these basically patients and all of their care, does that include any kind of extracurricular activities for the group as a whole? Do they go on shopping trips, do they go on field trips, things like that, outside of the facility?
Yes, we can. Those are limited just because of the mobility issues of the folks that we're responsible for. There were some questions earlier about making sure that the sidewalk was, had easy egress, because again, most of our clients are challenged with their mobility. They have either walkers or wheelchairs that we're dealing with in terms of egress and such. So it's not a very easy population to take in, you know, on trips. What we do instead, though, is we bring entertainment into the center. So we would have the ability to, through the adult daycare side, provide activities and engage with local choirs, local elementary schools and such, to bring the entertainment to them.
Okay, and so those would be, you know, based on, I guess, seasonal or holidays, or, you know, whatever brings up the event? And so they would be something that's coordinated and taken care of like that?
Yes, there's a daily activity calendar.
Okay. I'm not sure if it came up with the architect or not. I know you'd mentioned something about the mobility issues. The site is unique in that it has, you know, a grade, a significant grade that goes back, which is why the building, you know, is how it, or looks how it is. And some of the kind of uniqueness of the floor plan shows that there's kind of like an atrium in the rear portion of the building. Does that in any way pose a security or mobility issue to the patients onsite?
So the patients onsite are going to be funneled through that front entrance. So when a, on a typical day, when a participant arrives, we call them participants or members, when a participant arrives, they get a name tag, they're welcomed into the facility. We keep a log for fire, safety reasons, evacuation reasons, who's in the building. And all of their entrance and departures are through that front area. That employee atrium in the back that would be used for really employee-only entrance. So there'd be no, I can't see a scenario where there would ever be a participant coming through that back entrance.
Okay, so there's security measures within even the building footprint. Beyond this, the outside doors, internally in the building, the patients are going to be, you know, limited to certain areas?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's for security to avoid wanderers and-
And safety, yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. As far as the staff, besides nurses, physicians, doctors, that are either on call or there, is there any special qualifications that employees have to have? Any kind of certifications or anything?
Well, certainly, depending upon their position and discipline, you know, licensed nurses, licensed therapists, licensed physicians and such. But then they also go through an orientation and competency, annual competencies, pre-employment requirements, background checks, those types of things.
Okay.
All regulatory required.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have for, as far as operations testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one follow-up question that relates to parking overall in the site. You mentioned, I think you said 40 employees, is that max that's envisioned at this point?
Yes.
So 40 employees, could they all be onsite at the same time? Or is it very likely, depending on each day, may only have?
It's unlikely that they're all onsite at the same time, but it's possible.
It's possible that they'd all be onsite at the same time, and you mentioned of the participants, the max you would envision is maybe 60 to 70 per day, is that what I understood, or is that?
Yes.
And there is no occasion where a participant may drive themselves to the facility, they only get there via the buses?
It, I would say 99% are brought by bus.
Okay, and as far as visitors, you mentioned that, you know, on a rare occasion, a family member may come.
Yes.
So there's not going to be, in your opinion, a huge draw on parking on a daily basis outside of the employees? Is that-
That's fair, yes.
Okay, and you had mentioned, I think Ms. Sarmat asked if there were any outside field trips or, you know, things along those lines proposed. You said more often you would bring entertainment in. Could there ever be a scenario where, you know, somebody comes in and now you have families of all the participants coming, and it becomes a larger event that this site is not equipped to handle? Or is something like that not envisioned on this site?
No, that does not typically happen. Even when we have entertainment, it's really focused on the participants who are there for the day. It's usually focused, what's part of the specialty about bringing the folks in on several days a week is that the folks who are the caregivers, we try to prevent burnout by providing them a break, so they're not typically coming in to participate in the activities with them. They're kind of, you know, gives them the opportunity to go to work, or go do grocery shopping, or go do things that they want.
I only ask because I know there's a children's daycare here, and I picture like a graduation.
Mm-hmm.
For the children's daycare, I didn't know if there was an equivalent of something like-
No.
-like that for this type of facility that would really create an issue on the site, so.
No, nothing like that.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin.
Follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
You said Medicare pays for this? So someone would walk in, and they might need dressing or bathing, and depending on what services they need, that would be the price that Medicare would pay?
So when somebody enrolls in the program, they designate us as their insurer, as well as us being the provider. So we are the recognized insurer, we replace their Medicare, we become their Medicare essentially. So Medicare pays us, and the amount that Medicare pays us is based on the patient's acuity, their diagnosis profile. So it depends on what their diagnoses are as to what we get paid, and every patient's a little bit different, as you can imagine.
And if someone has long-term care insurance, could that offset something that Medicare does not pay?
Currently, we don't have any agreements with long-term care insurance payers. We're not seeing a large presence of that so far, but we would certainly be welcome to talk to them.
Thank you.
Certainly.
If there's nothing further, it's open up to members of the public for questions on operations testimony. Come on up. We can just get your name and address real quick. Hi there.
Hi. I'm Mary Gallagher. I live on 102 Highland Avenue, and I have a couple of concerns. I actually like the program, it sounds great. But the one thing I have is, first of all, the buses. It didn't say what size they were. Were they big, are they little? Are they the little ones that are for handicap with elevators? And with the parking, with a bigger bus, like a school bus, I'm just thinking that parking lot looks pretty crowded, so I'm not sure the size of the bus. And then the next, going into that, my, what initiated this thought was the, I live on a residential street just down the road from 202 to 206, and I'm concerned about the traffic. And Highland Avenue is used as a cut-through for everything, and it's getting worse. And I can see 10 or 15 buses going up at a time when we've got school kids at bus stops and people coming to and from work. We've got the recycling trucks, we've got the garbage trucks, we've got everything in the world coming down the street. So I'm concerned about traffic there too, on the residential streets. I know there's not much you probably can do about that, but I am concerned about the traffic as well. And again, it's a residential street, people walk on it, they're bikes, there's skateboards and all of that. So I'm not trying to take away from the building part of it, but I want to tell you, there's an impact to the neighborhood. I like the program, I would like to see, you know, maybe work.
Ms. Gallagher, I gotta interrupt you, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So he gave operations testimony, you can ask questions on the operations testimony. All these comments, I promise at the end of the case, you can speak for or against and put all those things on the record. I'll give you as much time as you need. I believe, and Mr. Plucker can correct me if I'm wrong, there is also going to be a traffic expert, which I think a lot of those questions, you can directly ask, and we're going to try and do that in the near future.
Going back to the operations, so when you're talking about the buses going all over-
I think the buses is a good question, yeah.
Somerset County, you're going all over, so-
Let's get Mr. Irwin that microphone that's on the table, maybe he wants to take a stab at it.
Oh. I didn't know if you, you're the one I should ask about that, because you did say it covered Somerset County. So you would have buses going all over the county, so how is that impacting us? How would it?
Okay. I want to make sure, I want to make, make sure this is on. I want to make sure, Ms. Gallagher, I answered both your questions. First, yes, we would be going all over Somerset County and bringing them back to, you know, the station is, or the hub is the center. So those vehicles, even though they may not, they may be going out and delivering people to specialist appointments in different places throughout the county, you know, picking them up, dropping them off at the hospital, picking them back up after their testing and so forth. They may not be coming back to the center, but they would be coming back there at the end of the day, to your point. The types of buses that we have, we currently, in Pennsylvania, I'll give you an example, we have 140 vehicles on our fleet that services 13 counties. Those buses are made up of three primary vehicles. There is a 12-passenger bus, there's a transit bus that holds about six people, and then there's minivans that hold about two people. And they're all, they're all handicap accessible, they all have lifts, they can all accommodate wheelchairs, walkers, whatever the ambulatory status of those folks are. So we use a combination, and it would depend upon where we're going. If we're just coming to your house to pick up somebody, that's probably going to be a van. If we're going to a senior high-rise to pick up four people that come to the center, that's probably going to be the transit or the 14, or the 12-passenger. So, you know, we don't have a one-size-fits-all approach. It all depends upon what we're picking up.
It all depends upon what we're picking up and where they're going. I hope that answers your question.
It's not a big school.
No, no, no big school buses. The largest capacity bus we have is about 12 passengers. And again, that's because we try to keep people on the bus for less than 45 minutes to an hour. And again, to do that, to pick up the folks that we're picking up who, you know, aren't moving that quickly, you know, we can only put four to six people on a bus to get them, especially if we're stopping at four or six places, to get them back and not have any one person on the bus for greater than an hour.
That kind of gets me.
Okay. Thank you. I hope I answered your questions.
All right, and seeing all other members of the public, I think it's going to wrap things up. And we'd be open to a break if you are, Mr. Plucker. It's 8:30. Why don't we do 10 minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. So we're going to reconvene at 8:40. We're going to take a quick break. We'll see you back in 10 minutes. Turn my microphone on, we're going to come back in the session. Roger, get a roll call, please.
Sir?
Here.
Wiley?
I hear.
This is me?
Yeah.
Queenie?
Here.
Christel?
Here.
Paul Gerald?
Here.
City Mayor?
Here.
Here.
Your honor?
Here.
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 Okay. Thank you very much. The applicant calls our traffic engineer, Rihanna Kershaw.
Good evening.
Hello.
Okay.
Get the microphone a little closer.
Sure.
All right, perfect.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kershaw. Could you just give the board very briefly the benefits of your credentials?
Sure. I am a senior project engineer at Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a bachelor in engineering and civil engineering. And I've been in the traffic engineering industry for approximately 10 years and have testified in front of various boards across the state.
You testified in Bridgewater?
I have not had the pleasure. I've testified in surrounding towns, though.
All right, well, welcome and we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kershaw. And your firm, Dolan &amp; Dean, prepared the traffic study for this matter. It's a letter dated July 29, 2024, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you were familiar with that study?
Yes, I am.
Okay, could you please explain the study's findings to the board?
Sure. So what we did as part of our engagement with the applicant was just review the impact of the proposal from a traffic engineering perspective. And what we found was that with this re-tenancy of the second floor, this is a very light traffic engineering case. To project the future additional peak hour trips associated with the proposed use, we consulted with the applicant about the anticipated operations, which we then, as summarized in our Table 1 of our report, would estimate approximately 61 trips during the morning and evening peak hours. That encapsulates both employees and the busing activity during that time. And what we did as part of a comparison exercise is recognizing that the second floor is currently vacant, we assumed a medical office type of use similar to what's permitted in the zone if it were to ever be reoccupied by something that is permitted. So that is also summarized on Table 1 within our report. And what we found was that the proposed use would generate an additional eight trips during the morning peak hour, but conversely, would generate less traffic than a standard medical office use should that have ever been permitted. So based on that comparison, the anticipated peak hour operations are almost identical during the morning and evening peak hours to that of a medical office and can occupy the space, to the medical office that can occupy the space without a use variance. Also previously noted, or maybe not previously noted, the site is accessed by a full movement driveway to Route 202 to 206. Under the proposal, we're not proposing any changes to the existing driveway. There's going to be no work within the state right-of-way, and the proposed use would not result in a significant increase in traffic pursuant to DOT standards, which is defined as 100 additional peak hour trips. So pursuant to the State Highway Access Code, the applicant is exempt from any NJDOT permitting, and the existing permit remains valid. That is, in a nutshell, the summary from a traffic engineering perspective.
Okay, thank you, Rihanna.
You're welcome.
Board questions, please. Board professionals.
Thank you. So I understand that this use category seems to be very unique or it has not yet been captured, either by, you know, the township's parking requirements nor really the IT. Is the, the numbers that were utilized, were they based in IT or they were just based in the, kind of the operations parameters that you were given?
The traffic projections are just based on the operational information we got from the applicant.
Was there any ability to utilize IT data to do a compare, another level comparison with it?
IT recommends that when you have operational information, that you should rely on that more so than the generalized information you get within the IT manual.
Okay. And these, these estimates from an operations standpoint, these are the worst-case scenario, I'll call it?
What we found, well, what we did was we kind of found like a middle ground between what they anticipate out of the gate, a middle ground between that versus what's maximum occupancy. So what you heard was that at the start, there might be approximately two dozen employees, but they can accommodate up to 40. We kind of found a middle ground with 30 to assume that 30 staff members would show up within the peak hour where the other 10 might show up a little bit earlier or a little bit later outside of the peak hour. So that's what our projections show.
Okay, so there's, is your testimony then that there would never be a time when 40 employees would arrive or exit the site at the same time?
Yes, and that's just a general assumption.
Okay. As far as the parking, I don't know if you undertook any kind of parking analysis or assisted the civil engineer in coming up with the number of spaces that would be required for the use, but it, you know, can you respond to that?
As part of our engagement, we did not really review any of the parking requirements or calculations.
Okay. In that case, I will save that question for the civil engineer. That's all I had for the traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Setting aside the fact that you didn't review the parking needs separately, have you taken a look at the different users or tenants of the site to make sure that from a circulation perspective, access perspective, can this site operate safely with the various tenants in terms of when their peak hours might coincide?
We did not look at that necessarily in detail, recognizing that this isn't a traditional, you know, medical office use with, you know, significant turnover. We do recognize that in the morning, there are going to be employees coming to the site for this particular use at the same time that parents will be conducting, you know, drop-off at the daycare. But what we, why we don't believe that parking is going to be necessarily a concern is just given that the operations will have a relatively come-and-go kind of activity over the course of the day when generally roadway volumes and site volumes are not at its peak, you're not seeing this conflict with those operations in place. you're not seeing this conflict with those operations in place.
And I think we heard earlier testimony about the daycare and how there may be times, drop-off in the morning and pickup midday, where there's actually vehicles that stack up around the corner of the building, albeit it might be for short periods of time, but did you look at that? And again, you're comfortable at the fact that these uses can coexist?
I did not necessarily look at the daycare operations in terms of that specifically, but I do feel comfortable with how the PACE program will operate, that it would be easily accommodated.
And the existing parking lot to the front of the facility that has the turnaround bulb area, did you take a look at the circulation, the truck or the bus moving template? Or was that just a Reynolds Group issue that, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that a bus can safely navigate around that turnaround area, the bus that's proposed for this use?
That was primarily done by Reynolds.
Okay. And last question has to do with the DOT permitting. It's not uncommon for an applicant to obtain a letter of no interest from DOT.
That is correct.
Heard your testimony, and your opinion, is that something that's warranted for a use like this?
A letter of no interest?
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll open up the members of the public that have questions on traffic testimony. All right, seen none, we're going to close that portion. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The applicant will call our engineer, Adonis Crispo.
And Mr. Crispo, just remind you that you are under oath.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we weren't proposing any major site improvements, but in light of the questions raised by the board's planner, Mr. Crispo, can you just identify how we calculated? Obviously, we're seeking a use variance. There's no parking requirement in town for this particular adult daycare use. Could you just explain generally for the board and the professionals how the parking requirement was calculated and what your opinion is far as whether it would be sufficient for the use as you heard it described by the other witnesses?
Yes, in our opinion was that we patterned it with childcare requirement. That's also using the facility. So whatever numbers required for the childcare is the one we use for the senior care. That's what we showed on our cover sheet.
And what is that requirement? I believe it's a, what's the standard for childcare?
It's three spaces for, one space, I'm sorry, for three children enrolled. So that's the same case for the seniors. It's one space for three seniors.
And Mr. Plucker, you're witness. Can we just have his qualifications and?
I apologize.
Problem.
We moved so quickly through Ms. Kershaw.
I recognize we got an hour left, and I appreciate you trying to keep it moving.
I'm sorry, this happens every now and then. Could you just please describe your qualifications for the board?
Oh, yeah. I'm a foreign graduate to start with. I took my PE in early 2000, and then I worked with Reynolds Group for almost 20 years.
An employee of Reynolds?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crispo. And you heard the testimony here tonight by Mr. Irwin and the other witnesses? Mr. Crispo?
Yes.
You heard the testimony that we offered tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and in your opinion, with the parking calculations as shown on the site plan, in your opinion, would it be sufficient to accommodate this particular use and the number of employees that were testified to?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Board questions for Mr. Crispo. Site engineer, is that his title?
Yes.
All right, board professionals.
Hey, Adonis. So the turnaround area you just heard me ask the traffic engineer about, the turnaround, your office ran the bus turning template around the existing bulb. Can you describe that? Does the existing turnaround area accommodate the buses that are proposed to be used for this project?
Yes, we did that, and what we used is that the small bus that's going to be used by the facility was used, you know, to make sure to make the turn in there and also to go through the port cochere, making sure we can clear the columns.
So it's your testimony that the bus will be able to navigate through the port of cochere around the bulb and then out safely?
Oh, yes.
And just for the record, Mr. Burr, the applicant we're representing will not utilize any larger buses.
One other question as it relates to the overall site improvement package. We heard prior testimony that the rear parking area is going to be milled and resurfaced. Can you just describe for the board the condition of the center and front parking lot, the access driveway, the curbing, are they all in good repair now? Anything that's not proposed to be improved on your plans? Are they in good condition?
They are, yep, they are in good condition. The pavement is just like because of age that we need to do a mill and overlay, but that should be sufficient for the use of the, you know, the facility. They're in good shape, Bill. I mean, yeah.
And has your office inspected the existing drainage facilities on-site, the drainage structures and piping? Have you inspected that, or your office?
We did look, not to the extent that we did, you know, CCTV, but we looked at the visual on the outside, and they're functioning.
They're functioning, and this may be more a question for Mr. Plucker, but would your client, either the owner or the applicant, agree that if there's drainage structures on the site that need repair, they'd be repaired as part of this application?
That would be acceptable.
I'm not suggesting they are, that's why I raised the question. I did note that the drainage curb pieces on the existing catch basins are out of spec, so we would expect those to be replaced with the NJDEP compliant headpieces. But if they need, if the structures themselves need repair, I'd like to see that happen as well.
Yeah, yeah, whatever the DEP standard is, they'll make whatever maintenance or repairs are necessary, correct?
Thank you, Bill. All right, members of the public, questions for Mr. Crispo, site engineer. All right, seen none, going to close that portion.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Crispo. Okay, very briefly, because I know it was mentioned, we're going to call a representative from the owner, Jacob Zarinski.
All right, and just for the record, I did notify Mr. Oller. He is represented by his own counsel tonight, so if his own counsel can question him, I have no problem with that if it's okay with the board. Sure, that's good. We just had one open board member question from board member Sweeney about rear lot access and sharing.
Yeah, so there's no agreement in place currently. We haven't had an issue with it in the past, but the, for the last two years, there hasn't been a tenant in place in upstairs space, so there hasn't been as much traffic in that back lot. If it becomes an issue, you know, we would need to address that.
And how about, just explain. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Anthony Tadaro, law firm, Fakery Drinker, Biddle &amp; Wreath. My firm represents the owner and landlord of the property. So we just figured we were listening at the back, we're fully supportive of the project, and there are a couple of questions regarding the existing. Yeah, we just got to keep it up. Not used to the concert. And so we just wanted to highlight a couple of the, bring, I guess, answer some of the questions for the first floor. There's two existing tenants on the first floor?
There's two existing tenants on the first floor. The daycare, which is 12,000 square feet, and then the doctor's space was 1,900 square feet.
And how many employees does the daycare have right now?
The daycare has 30 employees.
All right, and how many designated spots are there? There's 22, correct?
They have 22 reserved spots, yeah.
All right, and in the morning and for drop-off, the?
They have 22 reserved spots, and then the other employees will either park in the general parking after that.
But those spots are typically used for pickup and drop-off?
Yeah, at different times. They do drop-off at 8:00 AM, I mean, and pick-up at 8:00 AM, or drop-off at 8:00 AM and then pick-up at 5:00 PM.
And it's on the opposite side of the building, correct?
Correct.
So there should not be any conflict with the pickup and drop-off of the applicant's proposed use?
No.
And so the doctor's office, how many employees?
The doctor's office has five employees. At any time, there might be 10 people in the space with visitors and patients.
And there's more than adequate parking on-site for them?
Yeah, I would say so.
And there will be 162 total spots with this project?
Yes.
That's more than adequate?
I think it's more than adequate. For the doctor's office, they're allotted 12 spots, if I remember correctly. The daycare's allotted 52 spots and 82 spots for?
That's way more than currently used, correct?
Way more than it's currently in use, yeah.
And this is the only proposed use for the second floor?
Yes.
Quick question for you. When Mr. Sweeney had brought up previously that there is access from one lot to the other, and you said it had not been a problem up to this point.
Right.
If it were to become, you said it would need to be addressed. What would you propose to either solve the issue if it arises? Or is there some, there's no existing agreement between the two property owners?
There's no existing agreement. I would propose first to use signage that says that it's a private lot. And if the situation got worse, I would reach out to the, my neighbor there and see what could be done about it, yeah.
Is there any, is there any need to have that access for emergency vehicles or anything like that?
Is existing adequate access for emergency vehicles?
I was talking about specifically that area that we're talking about, which provides access between the two lots. So I'm asking, does that have a, in any way, a need or would provide a solution for emergency vehicles accessing the properties?
It's wide enough, I believe.
I think, are you, you're asking if an emergency vehicle could use it as an egress? Yeah, I think it could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think the move, the thing to do would be the signage and speaking with our neighbor, but never to close the egress, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, board professionals.
This is maybe not even a question for this applicant, but it's something I'll raise and then bring up back to the applicant seeking the variance. The parking table for the use provides that all of the parking needs are satisfied on the site based on the various uses that have tenants and then the various office spaces that are untenanted based on parking ratio for the township code. They are compliant with the number of spaces, based on their calculations that the applicant provided on the site plan. They do exceed where they are proposing 162 spaces and 131 are required. The testimony I just heard was that the childcare center reserves 22 spaces, has 30 employees, but on the site plan, it shows that the need for the childcare center, based on the enrollment of the children and the township requirement based on that enrollment, which is one per three children, is 52 spaces.
They reserve 22 spaces so that they can be close to the back entrance of the building? So those, the 22 closest spaces would be reserved, sorry, I need to interrupt you.
You were answering my question, and there's a different, there's another portion to it. I just want to clarify that there are another 30 spaces, basically, to hit that 52. There are 30 additional spaces on-site somewhere that the childcare center can utilize.
That's correct.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, they're just not delineated in any way, restricted in any way.
Right, right.
Okay, and do you believe that the new tenant is going to have any impact on those 30 free spaces?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to real quick ask you one more question about this cross-access driveway. In your time working with this particular property, have you seen occasions where the facility next door uses your parking lot? Or vice versa, do you ever have an overflow on your site that you need to use next door?
So we're talking about the rear parking lot now, right?
Correct, the rearmost parking lot has that driveway that extends to the next-door property.
It would be a question for my super, who's there daily. I'm sure at some point it has come up where someone's driven through or maybe just sat in their car in the lot. I haven't seen that it's a notable issue that has?
But you don't have any knowledge of there being such a parking deficiency on one property or the other that all of a sudden you have many cars parking across the way for whatever reason?
No, no.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Is there an opening? So we're talking about this opening that's on the south side of the property that links up to this southernmost property on 202206.
Right.
Do we know if there's an opening on that property further south? Because that's going to be a manufacturing facility, which is approved by the planning board, and I am concerned potentially overflow coming from two properties from the south, migrating two properties to the north, which is your property. Why don't you close that access? Why don't you just shut it down?
We haven't had an issue with it in the past. We could close it.
It's also for emergency purposes as well, in case they have to get back there.
Yeah. What are your thoughts, Bill? This is a potential issue in the future?
I think, I think the board could certainly ask that if it's not permanently closed, maybe as a condition, we get some type of gate up there?
I mean, something like even a chain link.
Absolutely.
You know, strung across, like we do at other senior living facilities.
I don't really see it being of any value from an emergency response.
Well, what we do on Frontier Road, I like that. It's just, you know, it's a chain. And EMS knows to lift the chain, go in there, and it can come in from foothill.
Several other properties, and you don't want to, I think it's a good suggestion, gated or chain it.
Absolutely, yeah, we can put a gate as a condition.
Well, it's something that we would certainly look into. We just want to make sure because?
Well, we're talking about it being a condition to this approval.
Yes, you can come back to us. We have an opening in January or February if you want to come back. I'm sorry?
In terms, you're asking in terms of putting the fence or putting a chain link or?
I'm talking about going to Home Depot and getting some chain.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Something you can do?
Yes, yes.
All right. Your counsel, so is that an okay answer?
That's fine. I'm running through it right now just because of the access lane, so.
And just for the record, Chairman Fuze, that would be a condition of approval? Okay, thank you.
But so that I have it right for the resolution, what are the, what's the lot and block number for the adjacent property?
Yeah, or we can fill in the blank when I?
You know, why don't we proceed, and I'm going to do my magic. It's amazing what you can find on Google.
Block 476, Lot 21.
Yeah, yeah. Any other board questions? Board professionals, members of the public? Sounds like we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, 21 is to the south. That's what we want to shut down with the chain.
Okay. All right, great. Our final witness, we call Kevin O'Brien, our professional planner. Mr. O'Brien, could you briefly go over your credentials for the board?
Wait, I'm sorry, before you do that, did we ask for public just to make?
Okay, yes.
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Very good, thank you. Modern technology. Kevin O'Brien, professional planner. Been a planner for 38 years, licensed by the state of New Jersey.
of serving on, uh, the three boards in my town, uh, zoning board, planning board, and redevelopment. I am published. I teach planning and zoning for Rutgers, the New Jersey Association of Planning and Zoning Administrators, New Jersey Planning Officials, as well as at the New Jersey League of Municipalities. I've worked for about dozen and a half towns over my career. Uh, I am slowly cutting back things, so it's fewer towns today. But, uh, for instance, currently I'm working in Union County for, uh, Rawway and Kenilworth. I used to work for Long Hill and Mars, uh, South Plainfield in, um, South Plainfield and North Plainfield in Somerset. I have appeared before over two hundred and seventy-five boards in fourteen counties in the state over my career. And in Somerset, I've had the pleasure of appearing in Bedminster, Branchburg, here in Bridgewater, Franklin, Greenbrook, Hillsborough, and Warren.
I'd like you more than qualified, Mr. O'Brien. Good evening, thank you.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, so the applicant is seeking a use variance for the adult daycare use and the associated bulk variance for the front setback in relation to the Portico share. If you could just please go over the planning proofs for those variances.
Sure thing. There are unique aspects to this application, which is required for a use variance. Use variance applications before you have to show you that there are special reasons rooted in the basis of zoning and the municipal land use law, that it meets the positive criteria, that it can be reconciled with the master plan and zoning ordinance, and that it meets the negative criteria and that there be no negative impact. As part of our special reasons, we have to show you that this is a unique property with unique circumstances that would allow the board to consider this for a use variance. For instance, in this particular case, uh, this is very unique because a senior adult daycare is an inherently beneficial use. It crosses the boundary between childcare, which is inherently beneficial by statute, and senior housing, which is also inherently beneficial by statute. This is a very rare and unique combination of those two uses, uh, that I believe makes it inherently beneficial. You've heard that this adult daycare is licensed by the state. Professionals are licensed by the state, and it is a federal program under Medicare and Medicaid. You've heard extensive testimony about the ACE program, program for all-inclusive care for the elderly. No need for me to go further into that, but that is a unique program and the state of New Jersey is starting that across the twenty-one counties. This applicant, it will be serving two of our counties. And residents within each of those counties are eligible for this care. There'll be no physical change to this building with the exception of, I guess you could call it a Portico share, uh, if you're an architect. I just called it a portico. Some people call it a canopy, so whatever you want to do it. I find portico has fewer syllables, so I may use that word. Uh, the employee, the seniors are bused to the daycare, as you've heard in testimony. There will be no drop-off individually with extremely, under extremely rare circumstances that are, um, contrary to that. The area around this application is a mix of corporate office buildings and some residence to, residences to the north, which are extremely well buffered. The proposed use is, is much less intense and what is currently allowed in the GCM zone, such as nursing homes, assisted living, as well as research laboratories and corporate offices. The master plan does have some guidance on this application. The most recent reexamination in October of twenty twenty-two lists a number of objectives for the township. And amongst them are preserve the development, character, and quality of Bridgewater Township, promote the well-being, uh, excuse me, the well-balanced variety of residential, recreational, public, commercial, industrial, and conservation land uses, guide land development and location of community facilities in order to meet the, the needs of Bridgewater Township residents, as well as coordinate future growth with needed expansion of public facilities and services. This application meets those goals by providing a senior adult daycare center in a particularly suited location that provides area seniors with federally and state-recognized medical care while allowing both the patients and caregivers to remain a part of their community. This application is also supported by a number of passages from the municipal land use law, including those are item A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. B, secure safety from fire and other disasters. C, provide adequate light, air, and open space. G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to serve the needs of all New Jersey citizens. I, promote a desirable visual environment. And M, encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development to the more efficient use of land. This application meets those goals by providing code-compliant, inherently beneficial, senior adult daycare in an appropriate location that capitalizes on its proximity to area roadways. In terms of the negative impact, the third prong of a use variance application, because this is an inherently beneficial use, uh, this application answers to a different set of rules than most of your use variance applications. Because it is inherently beneficial, we use what is called in the planning and legal community, the SECA balancing test. And I'm sure you've heard this before along various applications. And the SECA balancing test basically shows how the application satisfies the negative criteria through four questions that are asked of the applicant. And the first question is to identify the public interest at stake. And the answer to that is that the public interest here is providing a senior adult daycare facility. The second question to be asked is identify the detrimental effects that would ensue from the grant of a variance. And in this situation, I don't believe there are any. This is an adaptive reuse of a corporate office that is currently vacant. This is in a developed area, connected to regional, uh, ro, excuse me, regional roadways. This is not a green space that we are going to plow over, cave over. Instead, this is an adaptive reuse of an existing building. Third question to be asked is whether the board can reduce any detrimental effect by imposing reasonable conditions. I don't find any identifiable detrimental effects. However, of course, in the, in the process of the testimony and the hearing in front of you, the board may wish to impose reasonable conditions on this applicant as they see fit, based upon what they hear this evening. And the fourth question is the board should weigh the positive and negative criteria by balancing the public interest against the public detriment. In this case, the public interest of providing that adult, uh, senior daycare center outweighs the unidentified detriment. I would point out that there will also be major positives. Seniors will receive a federally recognized continuum of care that is not offered elsewhere in Somerset County. Seniors will continue to live in their community, and caregivers will continue to participate in the workplace or the community. As this application is for an inherently beneficial use, it does meet, as I've stated and read, the goals of the master plan and the municipal land use law. We meet the negative criteria by using the SECA balancing test and showing that there are no detrimental effects of this application. And the board can, of course, impose reasonable conditions based upon the testimony. Uh, there are no conditions to be imposed in order to satisfy the public good in this particular case because the adult daycare is particularly suited to the proposed site, will have no negative impact on the surrounding properties or the community as a whole. The bulk variance that's requested for the front yard setback for the portico can be granted under the flexible C2 standard and that the benefits outweigh the detriment and that the proposal is a better planning alternative than a more conforming design. And I would conclude to the board that I believe this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. I welcome your question.
I have a question. Um, from earlier testimony, it was mentioned that this would serve Somerset County. You mentioned that there were two counties that were being served. Can you clarify?
No, uh, what I said was that ACE is going to be offered in two counties of New Jersey by this provider. It's being provided, it's also being provided in all twenty-one. This application is only for Somerset County and only for Somerset County.
Thank you.
Question on inherently beneficial use.
Yeah, let me, I was going to get that too.
Why, why don't we have the, the lawyers and our planner kind of duke this out because you, you were pretty definitive in your, your definition and I'm going to step out and, and let Mr. Aller hop in here.
Well, the ordinance talks about child daycare. We were splitting hairs maybe when we talked about adult daycare. So I don't know, Catherine, do you think it fits the, the statutory definition?
Well, inherently beneficial use is our, uh, it's, it's a, there's a black and white definition, um, that the MLUL states and gives examples, defines examples there. But then the courts have also ruled and made determinations, which is where the gray area comes in because the, the courts have ruled on certain uses, which have then kind of, um, you know, set precedent. Um, of the precedent, I don't know of any adult daycare uses that have, that have, um, been determined by the courts to be inherently beneficial. And that's they, they haven't been captured historically. But the thing about it is, is that boards can, can accept the testimony from the planner if they find it compelling that this is inherently beneficial.
If we're to find this use so similar and so beneficial for the community, it could make a determination that it is inherently beneficial, even though the statute doesn't specifically identify adult daycare?
Yes, and it's up to the board even if a use was categorized as one of those ones that have been set by the courts. And if the board felt that the testimony and the details provided didn't, didn't really match with that, then they can still make that decision, um, that it doesn't meet rise to that level.
And I'm not aware of a case that says adult daycare is an inherently beneficial use, but notwithstanding that, I think the board could still make that determination.
Catherine, could you just, for especially the newer board members, just go through what inherently beneficial use is, you know, house of worship, a hospital, a school. Um, and then, you know, dovetailing on Mr. O'Brien's testimony, I, I, I think there clearly are aspects of this facility that have been testified to by the CEO, Mr. Irwin, that do lend credence to the inherently beneficial uses here. But why don't we just educate the board real quickly on what inherently beneficial means and then each board member can draw their own conclusion based on what Mr. O'Brien has provided to us.
Sure. So the MLUL, um, defines inherently beneficial use as a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general wel, welfare. Such uses include, but are not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or full photovoltaic energy facility or structure. Uh, as I mentioned before, that definition is not exclusive and over the years, the courts have identified and accepted a number of beneficial, inherently beneficial uses in addition to those that have been defined, which include places of worship, community shelters, public housing, public interest housing, such as senior affordable housing, uh, public utility installations, healthcare facilities for the elderly, group homes, and schools for the developmentally disabled.
Is it your opinion that this facility does qualify while not in the, the letter of the law, but perhaps in aspects of each of those definitions of those different categories?
I think, you know, similar to childcare facilities, and this is a, as, as, you know, the average age goes up and as people continue to age and, um, it's an, it's an unfortunate kind of section of, of life where now elderly people need care and they want to stay with their families and they don't want to go to an assisted living facility and leave their homes. This is a newer emerging alternative, probably within the last, you know, five to ten years that we're seeing, um, very similar to childcare facilities, where it provides a daytime opportunity because families still need to work, but they also want to take care of their elderly parents or grandparents that may live with them or may live nearby. Um, and so I, I believe, and I, I don't think it was provided in the application materials as inherently beneficial, so I do apologize that it was not something that I got into my review memo because I normally would talk about this and I would talk about the SECA balancing case, but I don't believe the application materials indicated that.
No, I was surprised also by that.
That that was being sought. Um, but I have, um, represented boards in other places that have had adult daycare applications similar to this one, where they have proffered that it was, uh, an inherently beneficial use. So I, I semi-expected it to come, but didn't know it wasn't part of the application.
This isn't unheard of.
It's not unheard of to, for it to be offered as such. Um, and I do believe that um, because, just because the courts haven't ruled upon it yet, is, is likely because it is an emerging industry. It is something that's meeting, is beginning to meet needs of, of people and families as they age.
It's a bit of a newer industry.
Correct.
Right? And let me just ask the witness, do you think that since it's a newer industry, um, does that, uh, I'm trying to reconcile why it's omitted as a permitted use or omitted from the master plan, right? So, so maybe you can just give us some testimony, just in case, with respect to, uh, you know, the reconciliation aspect, right? So, and, and why you think it, you know, it may have been omitted as a permitted use? Certainly. And, uh, by the way, I take no exception to any of the discussion that's been had and applauded. It's right on target. This is one of those, uh, in the towns where I work, I call them gray uses when I talk to the board because it's not specifically prohibited and it's not specifically allowed. So I call them gray because I tell the boards that, well, this means they can make an argument because nobody thought about it. One of the things I found that when you write an ordinance or a master plan, it, it's a snapshot in time. Same with municipal land use law, same with any of the other regulations we have in terms of zoning and planning. They are written at a time. They take into account what the current conditions are, and they can be changed over time. The change is slow. For instance, let's just say the last twenty-plus years, think of the major changes that have occurred in our world, the way we live, that are not fully reflected yet in the vast majority of ordinances in this state. Worldwide web, the internet revolution of the late nineteen nineties, it really didn't come to fruition until the early nineteen teens. Who would ever have thought you could order your groceries and have them delivered all through a device sitting on your kitchen table? Nine eleven, unfortunately, the anniversary is tomorrow and God bless all those folks and the whole who survived. Um, whoever would have predicted that? And it's changed the ripple effect, the movement of people and goods had on our metropolitan area, including here. Warehouses that have come about, the movement of people and the subdivisions following that event, the people moving to this area. And then the changes in the market that have come about in the last few years. And add to them the changes in our demographics. Changes in demographics have been really huge these last ten to fifteen years. Our population is aging. The number of seniors is increasing in both number and percentage of population. The amount of resources that are devoted to the medical care for seniors, uh, by Medicare and Medicaid is increasing, which is why there is a problem in a few years that has to be dealt with one way or another. And those demographics are driving the medical bus in terms of how seniors are cared for because they are living longer and they need care. Their caregivers, their sons, daughters, nieces, nephews, spouses, friends, are unable to provide that twenty-four-seven care to the average patient. The average patient in these facilities, which was testified to, is about 76 years old, and you saw the graphic with numerous disabilities. So I don't think that this is something that was anticipated when the ordinance or the master plan were written at the last go-round. I do note that the township has been very, very good at reexamining based upon problems in front of you every couple of years, but this is one of those silent problems, something that people really don't know about unless it affects you and your family person. It's not like, oh my God, we've got an increase in traffic at 22 and 202, it's because bum, 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 which you can identify. This is, this is a silent grower, and it's going to continue to grow. Not only will you see more like this in the area, which are unlike what we've done before. What we've done before, the adult daycare centers were basically a place to put folks during the day, so that mom, dad, daughter, son, whomever goes off to work and can be a productive member of society. Now, senior life is going to take full responsibility for this, because that's a whole nother ballgame. So in one way, it's sort of like a nursing home because it's 24/7 care. On the other hand, it's sort of like a childcare center because they're there during the daylight hours, but these people are still in trouble. That may be a very long answer, which I apologize for, but it was an awful lot of study.
She's gonna make him happy.
I, I would like to ask just a quick legal question. Because you, you spoke of the inherently beneficial use, and as Catherine said, and perhaps you said as well, that's typically a black and white type of issue. Here, we're in a gray area. Could the board approve this without necessarily saying that it was inherently beneficial, but rather it was beneficial to the community and therefore met the criteria necessary for approval? And I'll ask Mr. Aller.
That's why I asked them about reconciliation, right? To, if the board said, well, you know, really don't want to deal with it as an inherently beneficial use, does it otherwise meet the D1 positive criteria? One of which is, you know, how do you reconcile the fact that it's not a permitted use, right? And what, why is it omitted from the master plan discussion? And I think the answer is that, you know, the population is just aging now. Every year seems to get, you know, the life expectancy charts are, you know, greater and greater. It's just an emerging industry that wasn't really contemplated in the ordinances when the ordinances were, were put together, and I think that's, you know, what he said, and I think that's a fine answer.
Okay, and it sounds like Catherine, you're in agreement with this, if we?
Yeah, and I just, on that same question, Mr. Kulak, the CECA balancing test, so if you did accept it as an inherently beneficial use, the proofs related to that are a little bit less than because being, if you accept it as inherently beneficial use, that automatically satisfies the, what would be positive criteria.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien outlined kind of those other steps that you look at in the balancing test. So you consider the public interest in this use, you identify any negative consequences to grant the use variance, you consider any conditions that can help mitigate any of those negative consequences, and essentially you balance the, that event, which is, does it outweigh it? So it's not a automatic approval, but it is, you know, seen as a lesser threshold than a normal D1 variance proof. What I will say is that, in addition to the questioning that Mr. Aller just provided with, and the, and the discourse between him and Mr. O'Brien to the board, he did, Mr. O'Brien did provide some, he did talk about particular suitability. Again, not a proof that's required under inherently beneficial use, but he did provide some proofs. Generally, when we're in this gray area, I always recommend that the planner provide the D1 variance proofs so that the board can make that decision on the use variance, regardless of whether they accept it as inherently beneficial use or not. So that's protected under the normal D1 use variance.
So that's the Medici, and you're satisfied that we've met the, the enhanced criteria that's needed if this wasn't inherently beneficial?
So I...
So let's put CECA to the side.
I believe he's provided the proofs that, and satisfied the proofs, all the different topics he has to hit in the proofs in order to request it as a D1 use variance that's not inherently beneficial. This board has to simply make that decision, I guess, about accepting it as inherently beneficial use or not, based on the determination, based on your deliberation, because the CECA test kind of makes you think through those steps a little bit more distinctly than the, than a normal D1 under the Medici case.
The board has?
You have some discretion to determine inherently beneficial or just the straight D1?
Mr. O'Brien's provided clear balancing tests under both situations here.
I think he's provided the proofs for the balancing test. He talked through those more explicitly, and within that testimony, he did also talk about positive, negative criteria. He talked about the particular suitability, and then he talked about kind of the, why it's omitted from the master plan and zoning ordinance, and also gave some proofs about the MLUL purposes as well.
All right, great, thank you. All right, my question, I feel like, has been answered. Do the other board members have any other questions for Mr. O'Brien? Board professionals?
I think I just...
All right, and members of the public? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, that was very good testimony.
Thank you, Kevin. The applicant has nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to wrap up there, Mr. Plucker? Do you have a closing statement?
No, not particularly. Just to, to clear up, I, I thought we heard from Mr. Irwin, and I thought he gave a very good explanation of what his company does and how it is beneficial to the community. And just to be clear with the variance discussion, that whether or not this board deems it an inherently beneficial use under the land use law, which is a bit of a lower standard, I do believe Mr. O'Brien provided the necessary proofs for it, and the applicant certainly takes the position that he showed, that demonstrated to the board that the site is particularly suited for the proposed use, and did sufficiently address the negative criteria under the enhanced standard of proof required by the Medici case. Thank you.
I, I want to go back just to the matter of housekeeping, the September 3rd, the BUR, the joint planner and engineering memo. Basically, anything that we didn't hit tonight, we're going to assume that you accept. And now is kind of the time that you, if you take exception with any of the points that were raised here, I just want to get them on the record because we're going to assume that you're in full agreement with all 10 pages of their memo.
And I'm just gonna review my notes because I did review it extensively.
Please take your time.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I believe we hit all the salient points, but to the extent we didn't, there is nothing in the letter that we cannot comply with, or simply said we will comply with whatever the recommendations are, subject to the specific conditions that were discussed.
All right, and if you could just take us through what you're asking the board, I know we have a D1, and then we've got a front setback on a C2, flexible C?
Yeah, so just to recap, the, so we, variance-wise, we are seeking a D1 use variance under Section 78 of the municipal land use law. Adult daycare is not specifically permitted in the GCM zoning ordinance, so we are seeking the D1. And in connection with the preliminary and final site plan approval for the addition of the portico share, there is a setback in the zone, front setback required of 100 feet, and the portico share proposed, I believe, has a setback of 62 or 63 feet. It is, to be clear for the record, 62 feet is proposed.
All right, and Mr. Aller, could you take us through the conditions of approval?
So we discussed a few different conditions in the event it's approved. That would be to relocate the fire department connection to the front lawn close to Route 02206 in accordance with the fire marshal's requirements, install a fence enclosure around the refuse area as permitted by NJDP regulations in coordination with the township engineer, install additional landscaping on the site to the satisfaction of the township planner, obtain a letter of no interest from NJDOT, the maximum size of buses to be used at the site will be 24 feet. Did I hit the 24 right? Because the chart came off before I wrote that, right? It's 24? Okay.
24.
24 feet in length. If the township engineer determines any drainage structures require any, any repairs, those will be made. We'll install a chain to block access to the adjacent property at Block 476, Lot 21. And it'd be subject to the conditions set forth in the joint memo between the township planner, township engineer dated September 3, 2024.
Before we open up the deliberations, I'm going to ask members of the public that would like to speak for or against this application to come forward. All right, seeing none, I'll throw it down to you, Mr. Fresco, your thoughts, please?
You know, I, I support this. I think it's, I think it's a good use. I was a little concerned, I still am probably, if anything, about the portico being a little, a little too big, a little too thick, a little too close to the road, but, you know, which is why I, I expressed some concern about that. But overall, though, I think it's a good application. I think you did a good job presenting it. Your witnesses did a good job getting through everything, and I think it, I, I don't know if I go with the inherent good use, so I think I'm gonna go with the other side. Just because it's a for-profit, I kind of think I'm hung up on that, and I love for-profit, don't get me wrong, but I just think if it's a for-profit, you know, so whatever. But I, I, I'm gonna support this, this application, and I think it's, I think it's good, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney?
What I love about the application is the fact that it's going to make use of some empty medical or office space. I wish there were more solutions around that we could use here in Bridgewater to do more of that. In fact, I'm, I'm surprised I never heard of this PACE program. It sounds wonderful, it really does. Unless you're selling us something that we're not aware of, but from what I've heard, it's a wonderful deal, it's a terrific program, and I'm strongly in favor of approving the application.
Mrs. Min?
Based on the information that we have in front of us, most of the seniors who have come here, they'll be talking to doctors and dentists and whatever else, and it's more like a medical facility than a daycare center or whatever else. So it's a medical facility, there are so many medical offices around that same building to the south and across the street, so I don't see any problem in approving this application.
Thank you, Mrs. Min. Beautiful, thank you. Mr. Plucker, you've done something historic, something I haven't seen since 2014. Mr. Sweeney said, "I am strongly in favor of a project." To this day, I have never seen that he is one of the toughest people, he was chairman of this board. All that you hear comes out of my mouth, I learned from that gentleman, he's an expert. And to hear him say something like that, you by all means certainly have my support. I will further expand because I do hope that there are more uses like this in Bridgewater Township. There is a proliferation of empty office space, just by the virtue of what has happened during COVID, and telecommunications has rapidly changed, and speaking of Mr. O'Brien's technology changes in the last 20 years, just the last five years has upended the office space market, and I do hope that more people come and look at uses like this because Bridgewater is a wonderful place to do business, we have a wonderful demographic, an aging demographic. I do believe this is inherently beneficial. While hospital is defined as inherently beneficial, I know many for-profit and nonprofit hospitals that are, that are in effect in, in New Jersey. This touches a lot of the childcare, and there's a lot of parallels, I think, to that inherently beneficial use. While just from a social aspect that maybe even a house of worship may have, and there could be a rabbi or a priest or a holy person that could come in and conceivably give services here, so I do think you touch a lot of the inherently beneficial uses, and even, you know, on a, on a, on a whole, some of the parts, I think you do hit that criteria. So I'm strongly in favor, just like to quote Mr. Sweeney, I think that's wonderful, and I'm going to be in favor as well. Mr. Wiley?
I'm gonna echo also what Mr. Sweeney said too. I had never heard of senior life until I got my packet and started doing some research and everything, and we are growing, and people are living longer and need these services, and I think that it's a terrific service that you offer. I'm very glad that Mr. Irwin came and gave a terrific presentation and overview of everything. I think that made a lot, the whole application a lot clearer, and I think that your whole team did a terrific job, and I'm gonna use what Mr. Sweeney used, strongly approve and agree with the application.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjour?
I also like the application. I think it's something that was necessary. I also have never heard of it. I'm hoping that they can work through and maybe accepting long-term care money in terms of insurance. I still don't know if it's going to be affordable for a lot of people, but I like it, and I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. CCAT?
I'll keep it short. I don't think I need to say anything more than what was already said. I would support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Kulak?
I too have very little to add, but I would strongly support the application, and the, the aspect of whether it's inherently beneficial or just beneficial, I, I think is incidental to the decision that the board is about to render, so I too would support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much. It sounds like based on the deliberations here, we have a will to approve this. Do we have a motion?
I move.
That was Mr. Wiley, and seconded by Mr. Bonjourno, and?
As an inherently beneficial use?
That's a good, good question, gentlemen.
Well, we can take it out.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Well, we guess what they want.
That's what I'm asking.
Do you make a motion?
What's your motion?
Yeah, do you have a motion as inherently beneficial, or?
Yeah, let's go that route.
Do you want to second that, Mr. Bonjourno?
Sure, second it.
All right, so we're voting on a D1 and a C2 front setback, with the D1 having a CECA balancing test of inherently beneficial based on the motion. Do I have that right, Mr. Aller?
Yes. Motion to approve as inherently beneficial.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Mr. Goodhough?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Min?
Yes.
Fresco?
Yes.
Bonjour?
Yes.
Well done, sir. Good luck. Thank you, everyone.
Brian, I will need the transcript.
We'll order it and provide it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no, Roger, what's our next meeting date? Maybe you can help me out with that. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. Thank you.
The next meeting is September 24th. There are three residential applications on that night, nothing else, just the three.
All right, just so everyone can hear, September 24th, 2024, 7:00 PM, this room, we have three residential applications, it'll be a busy night, and if there's no other board business, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All right, Mr. Waddely and Mr. Bonjourno. We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Brian. Good use. But I, whoever said, Kulak said something that it's going to be affordable, but we'll see how that works.